All right, we'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is determination of a forum, which we have. I don't know that anybody's scheduled for public comments. We'll move on. So we have our consent agenda. Anybody in the audience or any member of the planning commission want any of these consent agenda items removed and be part of the meeting today? And if not, can we have a motion? So move. Second. To approve this consent agenda. Excuse me, I'll get through with my comments there. Carolyn?
Ms. Abel-Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ride?
Aye.
All right, before we get into our agenda items, if, once you have had your application heard, due to the lack of seating, we would ask you to leave.
You may want to go home.
But welcome to the city of Murfreesboro.
Well, there you go. Y'all are gonna want to be on the consent agenda all the time.
We should do that at the end of that. Let's see who's really talking.
All right, here we go. GDO on motion. The first item is Trust Point Courtyard Edition, initial design review of a courtyard edition located on 16.1 acre zoned LI, CM, and GDO 2 located along Van Cleve Lane, Acadia Healthcare developer, Margaret Ann.
Thank you, sir. Our first item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider initial design review for an addition to the existing facility at, located along Van Cleve Lane, Wilkinson Pike, and North Thompson Lane. This project is either known as Trust Point or Polaris, and it's a hospital in our community. On the screen, I have an ortho photo that shows the site. There are two separate buildings that are connected with the breezeway. The area in question is where my cursor is on the screen now. There is currently open green space. There was a master plan approved of this project where there will eventually be some additions, but today they'd like to make that an enclosed courtyard. Here is a zoom in on that particular area so you can see that there, in the area, there's really just some landscaping. There's not even utilities, so they'll be able to place the courtyard here without affecting the existing site very much. Our team has worked with them to ensure that the courtyard, or that the design team are aware of the standards applied to this property, as it's located in the Gateway Design Overlay. It is oriented toward Van Cleve Lane, where there is a, currently a buffer and a fence to help screen the view. However, this side is a little bit elevated, and so they have, let me scroll to the elevations. They have proposed this courtyard to not be like the interior courtyards that are wood fences, but this one to actually have material that matches exactly the building. And they're continuing the banding onto the courtyard and the base so that it looks like it's not an afterthought, but a part of the building and probably will not stand out to most people who are within the area. It's 14 feet high. It does have an ingress, egress from the facility. It's monitored, and it's a part of the services they provide. The Gateway Design Overlay District does require initial and final design review for projects, particularly those that have buildings or structures. If the planning commission is amenable to this request, staff will ask that initial and final be combined since it's a small project and it's really just an enclosure that does, is compatible with the existing structure. Mr. Matt Taylor is the civil for the project, and he can answer your questions regarding architecture or the civil for the project. Otherwise, staff would recommend any approvals be subject to all staff comments.
Ma'am, do you have any? Okay. Any questions from the commission?
If there are none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
For both initial and final?
For initial and final.
Second. Oh, no. Carolyn?
Ms. Abel-Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ride?
Aye.
I was just gonna, real quick, cut in and make an introduction. I meant to do it at the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Jonathan Escobar is our intern, who we just started this week. He is a student at NTSU, and we're happy to have him on board for the semester. And hopefully, he's happy to be here, and probably even happier to get course credit for being here.
And didn't get asked to leave.
And didn't have to leave.
But we welcome Jonathan to our team here for the next 20 months.
Good deal. Welcome, Jonathan.
Now you can leave.
Yeah. All right, next item, Mark Fertile Lot 3, Homewood Suites, initial design review of a 84,154 square foot hotel located on 3.6 acre zone MU and GDO 3 located at 1412 Gateway Boulevard. Gateway Hotel Partners LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our next project is initial design review as well, and it's for a new construction of a hotel in our community. It's a Homewood Suites hotel, and it's proposed within our Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO 3. And as you know, we have four sub-districts, and the GDO 3 is the overlay district that also has an additional review process where the design review committee reviews it. This project has been to the DRC already, and so now it's ready to proceed to you for consideration. It is on Lot 3 of the Mark Fertile subdivision, and that is this property here, and it's next to daycare. You can see that Medical Center Parkway is to the north, and Gateway Boulevard runs along the northwest border of the property.
I highlighted it then.
Sure. This one? Okay. The West Fork and Stones River and the Old Ford Golf Course is to the south. Here's an ortho photo of the site. The existing daycare is, this building is pushed to the back, and then, of course, there are medical office buildings within the vicinity. Not the adjacent lot, but you can see a portion of a lot next to that is the amphitheater that the city negotiated with some developers to develop. The permits have been pulled for that, but that is the location of the district. That helps with granting you. Additionally, the city has master plans for a greenway to be along the West Fork and the Stones River in the back. It's not there yet. There's either property owned by the city, or there's easements owned by the city to extend that greenway, and then the guidelines do say that if there is a greenway, that the property should connect to it. And the plans that we have are anticipating that greenway, and they are connecting to it as well. You can see that the property is located in the floodway, or in the flood plain, not the floodway, the floodways, the struck area here. Initial design review, of course, is to focus on the architecture, provide feedback to the team, get written into the project, and they'll come back to you next month with final design review, and we'll be able to incorporate the comments that you shared today with them. They are able to meet the minimum parking standards on the site, and we'll go through the site plan elements with the final design review, but I did want to mention that to you since I know it's a primary concern for your team. The hotel, I think I've got a better image there. The architecture of the hotel is here. We have the material board that the team will go through in just a moment and walk you through the design of the hotel. And I'll provide some additional information after their presentation and answer any questions that you may have. And I'll ask you all to introduce yourselves, and then the project, and we'll pass the board around if you could.
Okay, fantastic. So my name is Michael McGowan. I'm the Architect of Record. I'm with River Street Architecture.
I'm Roshan Patel with Conne Hotel Group, which is the ownership entity.
And James Argo, I'm with Civil Logistics, the civil engineer, just done the site plan.
Do you want a chair to sit in also?
No, we're based out of Atlanta, so I drove four hours.
I didn't know where you were going with that. I was based in Atlanta at times.
They're on chairs in Atlanta. No chairs in Atlanta.
So first and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for giving us this time on this rainy day. We appreciate it. We know everybody's time is valuable. So to introduce the project, the building itself is a five-story Homewood Suites with a ground floor footprint of about 17,000 square feet and a total square footage of about 84,000 square feet. The first floor is roughly 60% amenity space and back-of-house space. There is a kitchen component, but there is not any sort of restaurant that serves outside patrons. It's all hotel guests. The design of the building is mainly masonry. The first floor, the base, is a stone base. It's an aircraft, somewhat mountain stone, that goes up to 17 feet. The window details at this level are, have precast linals and precast sills. All of the windows on the building are a bronze aluminum storefront system. The main body of the building is primarily brick. We have a tan brick for the majority of the building, and then where the building jogs and bumps out, we have a darker brown brick. You'll notice that we do have some mechanical louvers on the facade, and our intent is to mimic window openings by enlarging those with a smooth Luccabond metal panel and using the same brick detailing that we're using on the windows. So we have a traditional solid course at the head of the windows and the head of the mechanical louvers, and a traditional row lock sill at the window sills and the mechanical louver sills. The cornice of the building is varied in design. We have the portions that are flat against the building have a roughly a four-foot-tall ephesus cornice, and then where the building bumps out, you have the darker brick. We take brick all the way up to the top of the parapet with coreboard brick. We have accentuated the corners of the building by popping up those parapets roughly three feet taller than all the other parapets around the building, and have added brackets so that we can extend the overhang in these areas. The main entry of the building has a picture frame design element that is required for Homewood Suites by Hilton. We've actually minimized the width of that based on earlier comments from the DRC and have stopped that at the top of the portico share so that it looks like it is morphing into the portico share, and that all becomes one design element. We no longer have any, based on comments from the DRC, we no longer have any materials touching the ground that are not permanent materials. Anything touching the ground is masonry. We do have a Alora panel, which is a cement board type panel similar to Ardi Board or a Nietzsche Ha that is within the picture frame at the main entry. And I believe the mechanical units that you can actually see in this elevation have actually been situated in the middle of the roof and will be well-hidden at the ground vantage points by our tall parapets. Our shortest parapet that we have is four feet tall, and that large parapet, the corner parapets are eight foot nine inches tall. So this is actually the vantage point that the planning commission requires you to show, indicating that you cannot see the mechanical units, and we're confident that the parapets will do a good job of hiding this. I believe I've hit everything, but I would love to...
Base, the lighter brick, the accent brick, mortars, of course. This is the Alora panel that you talked about, and then the storefronts.
I don't think so. I believe I hit everything.
I think you did. And then the formal open space for this hotel, they don't have a pool, which is typically what you have in the Gateway, is a pool. So they have a courtyard design between the back of the building and the rear property line, which is what backs up to the river and the golf course, and this is where the formal open space will be.
Yeah, we have an outdoor plaza in the L shape of the building there that have an outdoor kitchen area, fire pits, a bocce ball court. Really, the intent is to really have that activated with hotel guests enjoying themselves.
I was, shared with them a concern of just doing like a green space because it would just become like a pet relief area, and so they really have put forth a lot of effort in amenitiesing this courtyard and making it more than just, you know, just turf. And so they've really done a lot with different types of pavement to make it interesting, with lighting, with seating, and I think, I think that that meets the expectation of the formal open space, even though it's not a pool.
This may be getting the cart before the horse, but any thought with the property owner adjacent to you to have pedestrian access? Because, I mean, this is a great marketable thing once that amphitheater is built.
The pedestrian access is required, and they have it with the sidewalks?
I'm talking about to the next lot.
It's with the right-of-way, but the sidewalk is how we, our engineering department, we have it at the right-of-way, and it'll be at the greenway, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, we are, like, Margaret just related to, we do actually have a connection to the greenway in the rear.
Okay.
It's here.
Yeah.
The greenway, of course, doesn't exist, but we're anticipating it. And then the sidewalk and the right-of-way is generally how our engineering sets us as access points adjacent property.
Is there something like noise of basement or anything like that? It just gets built?
The amphitheater?
Yeah, I mean, they're engineered pretty well, and it's a block and plank building, right? It's not a state building, so, you know, we're gonna add that, you know, the cement to the blocks in there. So honestly, and, you know, most of the time concerts and things are typically over about nine and five in the morning, so they shouldn't be, they shouldn't. A little further away, we're on the, I think we're on the further west side of it, where the amphitheater.
Yeah. Where the point continues to see.
Yes. Across the golf course.
So that's...
Yeah.
And this is the property.
All right, any other questions or comments from the planning commission? If there are none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Carolyn?
Ms. Abel-Water?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ride?
Aye.
All right, thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
I do have one question for you guys, if I, if I may. Is it possible to submit the civil drawings and get approval of those prior to approval of the full design so that we could potentially start site work? Is that something that is...
I can talk to you behind.
Okay, yeah. Appreciate that.
Thank y'all very much.
All right. And as the guy from Atlanta, do a dolphin shirt, a kosher?
The governor was.
Not yet. Sorry. I'm a dolphin fan. I was just...
All right, the next item on our agenda is the Parkway Office Park Lot 14 Mental Health Cooperative, initial design review of a 15,211 square foot medical office building located on 1.8 acre zone, CHL, I, and GDO 3 located along Gateway Boulevard and Carl Adams Drive, Holiday, Holiday, Holiday Properties developer.
I'm Jeff Ofton with Holiday Properties. I'm representing the Mental Health Cooperative.
All right. Margaret Ann, I'm sorry.
Sure, thank you. Our third and final item in the gateway portion of our agenda today is for you to consider initial design review for property that's located between Gateway Boulevard and Carl Adams Drive. On the ortho map, it's where the cursor is. You can see that St. Thomas, Ascension St. Thomas Hospital is across Gateway Boulevard, and adjacent to this property is, I believe that's a bank, and...
It's a, it's a Davina Dialysis.
Oh, Davina Dialysis, which is probably the newest construction. And then there's hospice, and of course, Carl Adams Drive is a public, public street that's privately owned and privately maintained, and we had a conversation about it with another medical office building recently. And then Gateway Boulevard is the public street that's maintained and owned by the city of Murfreesboro. It has frontage on both of these streets. However, Gateway Boulevard is the public right-of-way, and so when we looked at treatments and design, we wanted to make sure that the front of the structure was taking key to that, and of course, when we look into design, we'll talk about that in just a moment. This is Lot 14, which is a part of a larger master plan development that's overseen by the Murfreesboro Gateway Property Owners Association, as such in the GDO 3, and was also required to go to the DRC for initial comments from that private board. After they go to that DRC, they're allowed to come to us. What's proposed on this site is a 15,211 square foot medical office building. It's set up as a multi-tenant medical office building with the plan to be in the future that there will be one primary tenant, but for now, they're constructing the fighter space. Will take a portion of the space and lease the other portion to a companion use, but not owned by them. The use is classified as a medical office building, and it does have a pharmacy component where they dispense behavioral health medication. The Mental Health Cooperative actually is in Murfreesboro today, but it's in a smaller, older office suite, Kensington Square, and they have a, their newest office is in Nashville, and if you're looking something similar, I think the design team has referenced us to them. They treat children and adults with an opioid addiction and specialize in medication assistant treatment. You'll see when you look at the building plans that there are a lot of therapy rooms because that's a big component of the treatment. This property actually has multiple zones on it. It's mostly zoned commercial highway district with a small portion of light industrial district. These zoning lines predate the subdivision lines, which is why they look that way. I get people ask sometimes, how did that happen? It happened because the zoning was in place before the lot lines came in later. But the entire property is located in the Gateway Design Overlay District. This site itself, let me get past all my comments. Let's decide real quick, just to reach you, has access to both Gateway Boulevard and Carl Adams. As I mentioned, Carl Adams is the privately-owned public street, and then Gateway Boulevard is the public street. The building has, or the site has the building on one side and the parking on the other with the detention area between the building and the street. And I really asked the design team to work on that design because, of course, we didn't want some of that, just was like a pit in the ground between the front of the building and the public right-of-way, and they have, and they'll continue to work on the design for that and show you what it looks like. The intent is to make it look like a lush landscaped area, and, you know, it won't be just, just long, but it won't look just like a pit in the ground. Of course, the sidewalks that are required, along with rights-of-way and connecting into the site. The formal open space was concentrated on this end of the building, which is the northwest side, but we asked them to add a link to the south side, particularly with that landscaped area. The site is able to meet the medical office parking standards, which is one for every 200 square feet. There's a building plan that shows you the tenant layout, which normally we don't spend a time looking at, but the architects spent a lot of time with us, city staff, explaining the layout, and I think it'll help make sense of the doors and the entrances that they're gonna go through with the building so you can, this is, of course, is the roof plan because we are interested in the equipment, but there are different services that are provided, and I'll go back to this page when he goes through it, and I'll let him talk about that. But when you look at the building and you see that there's multiple entrances, I think it just gives some context to why they're proposing it that way. So this is the building. The front is actually this elevation to the south, so this is what faces the public right-of-way, and according to their zoning ordinance, it is defined as a front. The other short elevation is what faces Carl Adams Drive. It's not technically a front, but really it's facing a public street, and so it's designed such as a front. And then we have the longer elevations that are where, this is where folks will enter the building from the parking lot, and the other long side is, oh, it's at the top, is what, this is where folks will enter from the parking lot, and then here is the back of the building, which is visible when you travel in certain directions on the streets. And so they wanted to meet that standard in our zoning ordinance that says all four sides need to be designed with same quality intent, and so that's why this elevation is similar to the others, is to meet that standard. They, of course, we have the material boards, and they'll go through that in just a moment. And you can see this blue helps identify the entrances, the different entrances that you might see. The feedback that I had given initially was to make sure to look at the parapet heights and was there any opportunity to increase them, to have the building screen the rooftop units instead of relying on metal, metal screen walls. And I asked them to look at, this elevation that is actually the front, when you break it down, it looked like it was, the gateway requires the primary material to be brick, stone, or rock. It's not, the standard isn't masonry. It's brick, stone, or rock in the gateway. And so on this elevation, I asked them to look at ways to increasing the amount of brick, stone, or rock, because this material is not. It's Nietzsche Ha, I believe. And so that was one of the comments, the parapet, and then looking at the base of building. And in some instances, planning commission approves transfancy or class going further down. In the past, sometimes you require the 24-inch to be the standard. In some rare instances, it can go all the way down when you, I think there, when you consider architectural features like jewel boxes, and so they're just gonna present that to you and present the plan to you. And they did some perspective renderings, which really helped communicate the building. This is the elevation that you're gonna see from the public right-of-way, and you can see the beginning of that detention pond here. And then this is the elevation from the parking lot, but really on the Carl Adams side. This is part of their formal open space, and then, of course, they have some of that in the front where they're doing seat walls, additional landscaping, lighting, the shade structure, and trying to carry that through the front of the building, but this is what you see from the parking lot. And I think those are the two perspective renderings. By this time, I'd like the design team to introduce themselves, and then go through the project. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'm Chris Miller. I'm with Davis Stokes Collaborative Architects.
I'm Yates Bateman, a former Lucas. I'm the civil engineer.
And I'm with the Brown, thanks, Stokes.
All right, yeah. Do you want me to start with the floor plans?
Sure.
Can I give a breakdown just so that there's an understanding? Now, I'll kind of work from left to right. There are three primary services that the Mental Health Cooperative is providing here in Murfreesboro. One is, starting with the left side, is the adult addiction treatment services. The center portion, there's two actual doors here. The center portion for services is for adult health treatment or general health primary services. And then the very far right side, where you see another double-swinged set of doors on the very far right, is for children or pediatric general health primary services. So there is a need, since this is a one-story building, to provide some sort of separation in terms of entrances from adult addiction, adult as well as pediatric, and it's mainly due to the children and youth aspects of the services that are provided. There was another set of doors that's provided on the center portion, and that's for pharmacy, that's for the pharmacy for services that are provided to patients within the building. If they're coming to pick up some refills or anything like that, this won't be anything like a CVS or some sort of pharmacy that you would normally think of that. It's pharmacy for patients at this facility only. And that's why we have exterior door, just so that there's access for, you know, they can come and get their refills or new prescriptions. But there's also, of course, internal or interior doors for access into that pharmacy as well. There will be no storage of pharmaceuticals other than Suboxone. That's the only thing that will be stored on site. So that's just a really general quick breakdown of the three services that are provided from left to right. And as you can see, the treatment rooms and the layout of the offices, they're identical in every one of those spaces, or every one of those services provided.
Can this lead me to...
Yeah, so there is a potential for the far right, where children and youth is located, for that to be a leased space on day one. And day one, the leasing would go to another behavioral health service provider. It won't be, you know, a nail salon or a tanning salon or anything like that. It will be within the behavioral health, and most likely within the Mental Health Cooperative footprint. So that, there is a potential for that to occur on day one. Day two is what you see here, where you have the children and youth services as a provision on that far right side. That's pretty much just a quick rundown of the plan, just to give you an idea that there are three distinct and needed entrances into this building. And of course, that comes off of the park parking lot.
Which is, that's, yes?
Yes. And I don't know if we want to move down. I can go ahead and continue on with the design of the building. As Margaret Ann had touched on already, there are three primary materials, and primary and secondary materials as they go with the GDO outline. First off, the, there's a lighter gray brick and a darker gray brick, which you kind of see in that center portion here. The darker gray brick is what's defining the base of that part of that material. So, and again... So again, that's, those are two brick surfaces. Those are part of the primary finishes as per the GDO. And the second material that we have is a reddish material that you'll see on the building, and that is a stone veneer finish. And that is also, can be considered technically a split face or varnish face CMU product, but it is a, it will be a veneer product. So what you see is the lighter kind of pinkish color and then the darker reddish kind of color. The darker color is the more rough textured finish. And then the lighter finish that you see is the banding at the top as well as the base at the bottom. That is a smooth, is the same finish, but is a smooth finish. So when I pass this around, you'll be able to kind of see the differences between the rough and the smooth. And that is technically considered as part of a secondary material for the GDO, but because of its decorative qualities, we see that as being potentially as a primary material, but that can be something that we can discuss as well. But we understand that that is technically part of the secondary material listed. A third material would be the darker gray that you see where there's larger modular panels where her cursor is, and that is a fiber cement smooth product. An nichihaw product is what we're looking at as a basis of design for that. And then part of the, I guess the tertiary materials under the GDO would be the aluminum composite metal pale canopies that we have here. So we've got a sky blue on this side. And then I have to also make a correction statement for, because if you look at the north and south elevations, we are supposed to have a kind of a darker bronze color canopy material as a secondary entrance, but not highlighting what's a primary entrance. So that canopy that you see right here in light blue really should be a darker brown color. So that's a correction that we need to make on our side. So at that elevation and then also at the south elevation. So just that single entrance, which is a staff entrance. And then another major material will be, again, that storefront that wraps from the east elevation to the south elevation. The south elevation, this one right here, is the one that's spacing gateway. And one of the major or main comments by the DRC board back in early December was that we really needed to provide some more of a welcoming presence. And if there was a possibility to wrap that entrance, what's happening here on this east elevation to the south elevation. So that is something that we did focus on. We wrapped that storefront around that side. We also continued the, as you see, the metal canopy portion which wrapped around and also cascades down into the ground and terminates, just to kind of enclose that portion, but also that vertical part of the canopy that is on the south side, that wraps down to the bottom. That also helps to kind of conceal that there is a secondary or a secondary entrance where staff were really entering, which is right there through that second, yeah, that set of doors. So it's doing a couple of things. It's concealing that they don't need to be walking around another sidewalk. And it's also, it's something different. It's highlighting that elevation a bit more. So that's just a general overview of all the finishes that are occurring on, along the, all four elevations of the building. As far as the heights, I just wanted to bring that up too as well. That was something that we knew that we needed to emphasize a bit more, the verticality of the building. And that was a bit of a challenge, given it was a 15,000 square foot building that is one-story and it's essentially a long linear building. So breaking up the elevation at every point at which there was a material change along the front, or all four sides of the building rather, and not just from a horizontal change in footprint of the building, because we do have moments where at every point at which there is a material change, that part of the building, that plane of the building steps forward or it steps back. So it steps forward eight inches or it steps back eight inches. So that's what's happening, at least from a horizontal standpoint. But from a vertical standpoint, we decided to try to capitalize on raising up at least parts or planes of that surface around the building to start to increase that vertical emphasis that was asked of us to provide on the building. But that also has done something else too. Initially, when we started the design process, we had a screen unit element on the top of the building, which was screening some mechanical rooftop units. And what was nice about raising parts of this building at points is that it has actually started to conceal the screened element. It's almost not even needed for the rooftop at this point, because the architecture is now fully screening anything that would be on the rooftop. There are points at which that screened element on the roof will be seen, but it will not be seen in any capacity or in any light that we originally had it showing. So I do want to bring that up, that, you know, this exercise did have some positive, you know, outcomes that occurred. And I think that's pretty much, you know, pretty much touched on everything in terms of these finishes of the building.
It's heavy. Do you want to? It's really heavy. Usually I pass it around to them, but.
Yeah, just your quick rundown, as you all know. The reddish tone stones, the bricks, these are the two bricks, the fiber cement product right here. Canopy, canopy, and then this is just the storefront anodized finished system and of course the glazing. Thank you.
So Margaret Ann, the way it sits now, do the materials meet the GDO requirements based upon percentages and all that good stuff?
So the GDO says that a structure needs to be primarily brick, stone, or rock.
Right.
And there's also a requirement for 35% glass. So if you, there's no, sometimes you will ask us for a magic 51% and that doesn't exist. If I looked at their board, which is what I did, and classified the materials that they have, the, what I'm counting for primary are these two bricks, where's the hair scratch, and this limestone. So these materials, these three materials are overall, I mean, it depends on, I have elevation and overall, are about 28%. The secondary that I'm counting is this nichihaw or the fiber cement, which is, you know, like a mold, like a cementitious mold, and the CMU, the Trentworth CMUs, these two. So those are what we're, I'm considering secondary, those are 42%. Glazing door coping overall is about 19%. And so if you're just looking at percentage, then it looks like the secondary materials are the primary materials on the facade of the building. So that would be the, these two stones and the nichihaw. I think the architect is asking, saying, CMU is typically, if you think of like an industrial building, right? And the architect's asking you to consider at least maybe, this is, is this split face or is it something else?
It is, it's a split face. So it's a rough hewn texture is what that is, as well as the smooth, those two being what we don't normally consider as a CMU product or even a split face CMU product. This is a little bit more of a step up, is what we would consider it to be. And that's what we wanted to ask here in this meeting.
The ordinance says secondary is stucco or synthetic stucco, glazed curtain walls, integrally colored split face concrete block, and cementitious composition siding. That's the specific language. And primary is brick, precast architectural concrete, or natural stone, limestone, granite, or culture stone. I mean, this doesn't look, this one at least doesn't look like most CMUs, which is true, and it's integrally colored, which we would require anyway. But, I mean, I'm okay with that. I told them to ask what a planning commission thought as the design review board here. It did come up at DRC, which I was surprised about generally, but maybe, I don't know.
I was going to say the rough is what's mainly part of that plane as well, or the planes that we have it on. The bands are simply just the smooth portion. So we've, we've looked at using the rough textured stone at most of those surfaces where you see it.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, those, I mean, those two look like stone to me. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to get an idea of what, what the guidelines were, so we're, you know, trying to make sure you treat everybody evenly here. But I think that I don't have a problem with it.
I think it's a good looking building. What's the acronym for C?
Unit.
Concrete masonry unit. So it's just your typical kind of eight-inch block that you would normally see in gray. It's usually, you know, not as elevated of a design as what we would normally think of, when you think of CMU, so.
So, I mean, I think there are different ways you can go. They will come back to you for final, and so if you have any questions or you can do some research, they can do that at final. You might like it to say it is. And it may end up though, when it goes to DRC for final design review, they might have something different than we think anyway. So I don't, I can't speculate for them. I think there are easy ways, if you wanted to, if you were looking at numbers, there are things you could do, like you could change the base from a CMU to like a, some kind of limestone, if you wanted easy things. But if you like the design, then you may just want to, I don't think this one could in any scenario be considered a primary material. This one is pushed, but as a planning commission, you could probably make that determination.
It's more affordable? The CMU is more affordable or?
Endurable and affordable.
There is a durability aspect to it that, which is why we've gone with Trentworth or there's another product called Dallowton as well, and it's the same product, but it's a, it's an old castle product, basically it. So it's, it comes from that family of finishes.
Lasts longer and it's more affordable.
I don't know that it'll last longer than brick. I'm a class assistant. But it lasts probably almost as long.
Yeah, I think it could last as long, almost as long. But there's also sustainability aspects to it as well, in terms of the production of it and why we're looking at it as well for use.
Sometimes we get caught up on the whole base thing where the glass is. Are we okay with that?
So I wanted to bring up that within the GDO guidelines document, there is a statement about longer extents of glass where allowing an eight-inch sill piece as, and that being determined as the base. And so that's what we wanted to ask here as well. Since we do have a larger storefront piece, you know, from the east to the south, can that eight-inch sill as part of that element be, can that be the base? Can that be part of the base?
I think, yep. It's understandable when design teams work in our community, they have multiple documents that they're reading and trying to work around. Here's the gateway standards and there's the design guidelines. I think what he's referencing is the Murfreesboro Design Guidelines, which are citywide standards. And the eight-inch million is allowed in multi-tenant retail buildings where they have basically just glass running along the multi-tenant retail buildings. In the gateway, it, the standard is, is 24-inch masonry base, except if it's an architectural feature. And so you would determine whether you believe this is an architectural feature or not. Otherwise, 24-inch masonry is the standard for this.
Is there landscape in front of this?
Mainly for that, there's just a little bit of landscaping mainly to deter people from, you know, way down to that secondary entrance.
Looks like an architectural feature.
Yeah, I agree. I'm fine. I don't think any issue with it. All right, any other questions or comments for the applicant?
It was a similar question, I think, like Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. Recently, we discussed that base and they wanted to not put it on their building, I think St. Thomas as well. And there was that discussion and, and so that, I think that's where the most reason is.
Okay. No comments or questions or a motion?
It's okay. How about the blue?
I assume you're just wanting to match the, the writing in your, in the RV, the logo.
That's, that is the intent, is to have a branded entrance or something that actually signifies that these are the entrances by using that blue as part of their brand color.
So they were wanting to support issue.
It certainly pops.
I tell them that they need to say, pull it right or if they wanted to be approved. And it's only used over the entrances to the building, not on the facade, not in other places. And it's supposed to be an indicator that in a multi-tenant building, these are the entrances. Yeah.
Well, I like that the other entrance is not where.
Yeah, and the, the north and south secondary, that was correct, as you see it. It was just incorrect in the elevations. That's what I had pointed out earlier. But that's, what you see here is a color that would match similarly to this fiber cement color.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff pending.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Carolyn?
Ms. April Warner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. France?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
That motion, that application passes initial design review. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to flats and plans on motion. Wawa South Rutherford Site Plan for 5,000 square feet, convenience store, and 16 pump gas station on 1.9 acres, zone CH located on the northeast corner of South Rutherford Boulevard and Bradyville Pike. There's Unicorp National Developments Incorporated as the developer, the Smith.
Good afternoon, planning commission. Glad you're staying safe, dry, and out of ice. This particular property site, as you can see in the drawing, is at South Rutherford, Bradyville Pike, Floyd Avenue, and Willow Drive. This particular piece of property was rezoned about 10, 15 years ago from a residential to a CH on the corner component and a CF on the lower component. The Wawa project site sits predominantly on the CH portion, which allows for gas station type use. And there's a shared access driveway that comes off of Bradyville Pike, which is encouraged by TDOT. That would actually serve both of the sites. This particular one, there was many years ago CCNRs, which the city does not police, but we did take a look at to see how they were incorporated in the plan. The floor plan for that property, when you take out all of the storage areas and things that are allowed under floor area, it ends up being about 4,500 square foot building versus the total exterior is that 5915, which is allowed under the current zoning standards. And when our new zoning standards come into place, that won't be an item anymore, whether or not it's under or over 5,000 square feet for the most part. So it does meet that with today's standards in place. When we're looking at the project site layout, the existing project site does have some wetlands and wooded areas in place that are anticipated to be removed with the initial project phasing. When you're looking at, again, those access points, there is no access off of South Rutherford because there's just too short of spacing that comes across that frontage. But the main access is coming again off of Bradyville Pike and Floyd, and that's partially to address those CCNRs, ask that no entrances be off of Willow Drive, to be a good neighbor to the existing residential neighborhood.
So that's the only entrance and exit to this whole property?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And this one's that shared access point. So when a future project comes in here on the CF zoned piece, it would access the site from here. here on the C F zoned piece, it would access the site from here. And I believe, Matt, you're having a cross access easement across the whole portion. So you can come in either side to be able to access that other undeveloped piece. As you can see here, the canopy is along the front side at 210 feet. The building here is about ninety-one feet long coming across. And you have seen two other Wawa sites. So we're trying to be consistent with some of them. This is the first one that's in a residential neighborhood. So when you do look at the architectural components, this one has a little bit softer context for the building materials on all of the various sides. Coming down here, you can see a little bit better that path of travel for tanker trucks, which Mr. Taylor said they don't believe that the tanker truck will clip the portion of the canopy. But I did point that out in case that was a concern. And they are looking at doing some improvements along Bradyville Pike that will allow for a right-hand turn into the site and then a right-hand turn out to Rutherford, as well as I think there's a sidewalk that will be on all frontages ultimately. And you can see here, there's pedestrian pathway that ties back so that the neighborhood, should they wish to walk there, they have an access into the site as well as access here off of Bradyville Pike. It looks like the computer is struggling. There we go. Site layout, when they're looking at things, they do have some formal open space just around the building with enhanced concrete treatment, as well as some additional enhancements to the base of building plantings. We did mention in the staff comments that landscape at the same location of the transformer has some conflicts. You usually can't have both of those in the same location. So they may have to make some adjustments in those areas. They have addressed the photometrics. Even though the property line is here, the thought is with that shared driveway, we would allow that to be that point five candle lots stopping at that point because there will be another commercial location at that site versus it being at the point five right at the back of the building. And this is actually where they will have drop off degrees to the outside of the building. So similarly, you've seen on the other project sites, the Wawa has the pitched canopy that goes down. This particular one shows 210 feet with sixteen pump gas station going along the frontage. So what you'll see facing Rutherford will be the lower end. And the pitch will go towards the easterly portion away from Rutherford. Here, the trash enclosure, because it is highly visible with as many sides as they have, they went ahead and enhanced that material to the stone material on all of the sides. And then really trying to soften the details of the swing gates on the property. So this particular elevation is the one that faces Rutherford Boulevard for the main entrance. The backside here is kind of a bow entry point. This would actually be your delivery doors. But the thought process was to have this look very more neighborly in context versus what you traditionally see. And then again, having the glazing on those other components of the building. And very, very similar to the other Wawa stations, with the exception of, I would say, a little bit more stonework in this section. And then they did look at removing a sign inch that was going to face towards the residence, which might not really benefit them anyway from a marketing standpoint. And I think you can only have three wall signs on your buildings anyway in any of these districts. But again, you can see the 3D rendering of how that project lines up. And then I just mentioned for your edification C C N Rs, really three components that they looked at is keeping the gas station not on a C F zoned piece, so they kept it to the C H, not having access back to Willow Drive, which they've done. And then we wanted to point out that there was some additional landscaping we would not normally require on this one. But I think the intent was a type D buffer along that Floyd and Willow, excuse me, Willow Avenue, and then the far easterly boundary. So we wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware of that being in place. There we go. So you can see just heavier landscaping along Willow and then the other side of the site. So with that, there are staff comments that are included from all of the different departments. The other thing that I would like to mention is the parapets. They made some changes in regards to that. Originally, they were talking about the HVACs not exceeding the height of the, of the highest parapet. And we've stated, really, it needs to be higher than the lowest. So if the lower ones here and the upper ones here, you don't want the HVAC to be visible from those lower roof points. And so that would be something we would be looking for during the project permit. So with that, this is a straight and bold zoning, a site plan review, no public hearing. And the applicant's here, she should have further information to add. And materials, of course, this is not G D O, so we don't have to pass around material boards. But this does incorporate brickstone. And I want to say, is it hardy?
This one has some hardy. So that's generally the side in the building, very consistent with the others. And we've seen how our work on the staff, we knew this was an extra residential, so we did want to soften that up. So we incorporated a hardy instead of, I think the others have a little bit of E F I S on them. And then the hardy found a different color, a different texture. So we're very close with the staff on that. I think this is the same site. It was a Thorntons or a Speedway that was approved here previously. So the site design, everything is very similar to that. Obviously, the building's a little different, but the site design is almost identical. All right. Any questions for the applicant? There are none. We have them up. I'm sorry.
I have one really quick.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm having a hard time remembering the project, but I know it wasn't too long ago that we approved, I think, a gas station that was relatively close to some other homes. Isn't there a buffer, so to speak, that has to be, that has to be between the gas pumps and the closest home?
Only if it's C F.
Only if it's C F.
Correct. So our board of R Z A, C F is the only zoning district that you have that 200 foot. And I think it may be from property line to property line. So in this case, the gas station component is kept specifically to the C H portion of the site.
Okay.
It's a tight turn on that Floyd Avenue, but they can always approach it from the Bradyville. Is there a light there? It sounds like a frame for breaking down.
Yeah, there is. That's true.
Credit issue to that.
Yeah.
Are also getting ready to make those improvements to Bradyville on the other side. And then this project will be, usually improvements that will tie into that.
We'll be installing Kirby gunner and sidewalk along both Rutherford as well as Bradyville. And there will be extended sidewalk along Floyd. And I don't remember the baggage room right there, but we'll be building sidewalk everywhere in Bradyville. That's all it is.
Why it's good to support like a break because they're coming to you, right? It's a nice spot.
Yeah, that's plenty. Well, any other questions or comments?
Nobody wants to talk about the canopy.
I like the canopy. Subject to staff comments.
You got a motion in a second? Okay. Carolyn?
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you, Commission.
That application has been approved. Moving on to new business, we have a zoning application for approximately 3.97 acres located along the South Gate Boulevard and West Gate Boulevard to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to P U D. South Gate Developers LLC is the applicant. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Murfreesboro Planning Commission members. The next application before you is for a property located at the southwest corner of South Gate Boulevard and West Gate Boulevard. Property is currently zoned partially C H and partially commercial fringe. Roughly this pink section here is on commercial fringe. The road is on Commercial Highway. The request is to rezone the property from C H and commercial fringe to P U D. The surrounding properties are all, the surrounding properties to the north, east, and south are all currently zoned commercial highway. Let's get a better map here. And most are already developed. You've got a couple hotels. You've got a convenience store. There's an auto repair business to the north, as well as a current contractor's equipment rental facility as well. The map code that's right here on the map has an approved site plan for a large, like tractor trailer healing facility to go on this vacant property here as well. Current properties, subject to properties roughly four acres, a little under four acres. Current site design, subject, principal structure is going to face the South Gate Boulevard and have two primary entrances along South Gate Boulevard as well. There will be one secondary entrance off of West Gate Boulevard. I think we have a much better drawing, thanks to Mr. Taylor. As you can see here, property to the west and southwest is currently zoned R and D, which is residential duplex. And all of those properties are currently developed with either single-family detached or single-family attached homes. The current proposed design will have a type E landscape buffer adjacent to those residences. That's a 20-foot wide landscape strip with three rows of broad growing evergreen trees. In addition to that, overall, they are preserving approximately one acre of green space. As you can see here, you do have the landscape buffer. You have some stormwater area and some additional landscaping here, all to help buffer screen and provide separation off of the exterior movements and potential negative effects from operations there. Application has, or part of the plan development application is to identify any exceptions to the zoning limits that you may need. They have identified two items in their application as part of the P C D planning book. They're requesting an exception that foundation landscaping only be required along the east side of the building. That's the side adjacent to South Gate Boulevard. As the northern and southern sides of the building have multiple access points for vehicles and equipment to enter and exit the building. And the western side of the building is immediately adjacent to storage and maneuvering areas where landscaping has a high likelihood of being in conflict with the outdoor uses. The second exception is requesting exception that overhead slash utility doors be allowed to face the West Gate Boulevard public right of way. And to mitigate the impact, the doors will be decorative and will be screened via the landscaping along West Gate. Along this West Gate side, they do have both a six-foot opaque fence that's proposed, as well as landscaping along that perimeter yard as well. The doors that are shown, as these are large roll-up doors, they have opted to utilize a door that has windows in it to help break up that hard surface and provide a little more decorative aesthetic than what you would normally find in an area like that. Future land use map identifies this area as mostly general commercial. Again, with that pink area that we looked at earlier being neighborhood commercial. And the uses that are proposed in this development are mostly in line with this neighborhood commercial and general commercial aesthetic. The immediate proposed use is the contractor's rental, who's the exact term, contractor's rental facility, which is typically more of an industrial use. So Planning Commission members will need to determine if this is an appropriate deviation from the comprehensive plan when you discuss this item. Staff is supportive of the request. The majority of the land uses that are proposed with this development are consistent with the approved Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map. In addition, significant buffering and screening in open space are proposed next to the adjacent residential development. Make everybody dizzy for back and forth here. Uses to mitigate negative impacts on the proposed, from the potential proposed uses. And significant screening is proposed between the equipment storage areas and the public right of way to mitigate negative visual impact on the public street. This development, as written, if the uses were to change from the contractor rental storage area, then they would need to bring back site plans that meet current design standards and zoning coordinates at the time it was submitted if the use were to change in the future. Like I said, they do have several uses in the current plan book. They have also excluded several uses that would not, that would normally be allowed in Commercial Highway that they are excluding from this development as well. I'm available if you have any questions. I believe Mr. Taylor and Mr. Smith?
Is there a list of those?
They are both here. I believe Mr. Taylor has a presentation today.
We'll just talk a little bit about our pity. If you know where United Rental is today, it's down there off South Chur, near the intersection of Milton and City. So it's really close to my office. You know, they're a pretty quiet neighbor. I rarely see anybody coming in and out of there. They're very much, they're mainly delivering the equipment to site. So the main of them going there, it's pretty little contractors showing up at the site. We did host a neighborhood meeting. We had exactly one person show up and it was the gentleman that owns the property directly south of us, the commercial property. And so we told him what we were doing. It was a five minute meeting. It's the easiest neighborhood meeting I've ever had. So we think, we actually think our building's probably going to be nicer buildings in the general area out here. It's similar to most of this older development as to what's there. So we're excited by getting United around off of Chur Street, but that be a more proper use for retail and commercial there. Moving this back to a secondary type use. So we'll be happy to answer any questions.
You said if it's used for anything other than that, it's got to go through zoning again. But there's also a list.
Side plan.
But there's also a list of other approved?
Yes, there is a list on page nine of your book. If any of the uses that we show here are allowed inside the existing zoning, we'll remove some. So it's more restricted than was allowed there today.
So then there would likely be some, if they did go to one of those commercial uses, there would likely be site modifications because the way that they're designing the site right now doesn't lend itself to a, you know, retail use or restaurant use because the, instead of a large parking lot, it's a large paved storage yard. And so they'll have to come back in, submit a site plan, demonstrate compliance with our parking requirements, landscaping islands, everything that would be required for one of the commercial uses that they have on their list. But I think what they're working into their plan is they're building that into, putting those in as allowed uses and then stating that they will come back to the Planning Commission with site plan review when they make those changes to the site plan. If for some reason United Rentals in five years or 10 years vacates and Mr. Smith needs to rent to one of those other, other proposed uses.
Yeah. And we're anticipating this being long-term. And so more than five, United Rental has been at that location as long as I've been here, so 20 years. It really just outgrown the facility. And that's the reason for the move. And so Mr. Smith wants it to be, he's going to build a site with it for long-term over there.
I appreciate that you have a huge buffer and extra land around there.
Like, is there, excuse me, sorry. Is the landscaping that you're proposing next to the residential, is there already, is there already trees or stuff there or not? If there are, they are. Doesn't please anybody? Yeah. We've had that life for 20 years. And I personally wish I would have had half the time to talk about them. They're all.
diamond, and they're all, they're all good.
Yeah.
They're going to end up with an acre park.
Just that. Okay, yeah, right.
So it's, it's, it really landscaping a while, and the site has a nice spread and will fall away from divided ways anyway. I guess Solomon, with United Rental, he wouldn't be today if anybody had any question about how they functioned, but the well-staffed, large company that you think is running, or if he actually would be here.
I agree with Brian. I think it's great that there's that much distance, you know. Initially, I just worry that landscaping is going to have to grow up, and so can these people see what's going on? I know there's a lot of distance, but, you know, is there a need for a fence, is where I'm going with it.
What I would say, if we go back to the concept, wait a minute.
Yeah.
There you go. So we've got, over here, we do have a fence.
Oh, you do?
This one's more security in nature, I will say that, but then we'll also, because we're going to be burning up for the, I'm going to touch you, that's all I have, so you'll tell my wife I said that.
I'm setting her this recording.
And so we'll be building the berm up right there as well.
Okay, okay, all right.
Perfect. And we do have the entire, I felt the Mitch earlier, that we have the entire storage area completely fenced for security.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? And if not, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, no, schedule a public hearing.
Just give them a public hearing.
Sorry. February the seventh.
Uh, I'd like to have a public hearing on this February seventh.
Second. Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I've got a little ahead of myself there.
You're just trying to sleep, sleep sometimes.
Yes, right. All right, here we go. The next item is a proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance relating to regulations for electric vehicles and pertaining to the following sections. Section two definition, section seven site plan review, section twenty-six off-street parking, queuing, and loading, and end notes for chart two, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios. The City of Murfusboro Planning Department is the applicant.
Mrs. Noble? Good afternoon, members of Planning Commission. So today, we're bringing back the electric vehicle parking regulations that we brought up a month or two ago. We've made some pretty large changes to the ordinance, the largest of that being actually removing the requirement for any EV parking stations. Mainly what we're left with is just regulations for when that developer wants to voluntarily put those electric charging stations on their site. Those regulations revert, basically include parking stall dimensions, locations, screening requirements for equipment, and to protect pedestrian and vehicular areas for drive aisles and sidewalks and such, so we don't have cords and other things stringing across the sidewalk.
All right. Any questions regarding these items? Are we, I guess, one motion for all of these?
Yes, it's all, it's all packed together.
One as one amendment? Okay.
And we would be asking you to schedule a public hearing for February seventh.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing for February the seventh.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
All right, that motion is, well, no, it's set up for a public hearing, so never. Letter C, street renaming to rename a segment of Blackman Road south of Pendleton Boulevard to Hartman Farm Court. City of Murfusboro Planning Department is the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm all over the place. So this is one, back in October, y'all held a public hearing on the renaming of this segment of Blackman Road to Blackman Beasley Court. We have not implemented that, that street renaming. This is the remnant segment of Blackman Road that is leftover after the realignment of Blackman Road at Veterans Parkway to line up with where Shores Road intersects with Blackman, where Shores Road intersects with Veterans Parkway. So we have not implemented that yet because the developer of West Lawn Commercial East is still working on constructing that and working with some utilities on finalizing some, some things. So in the interim, we wanted to bring another potential street name. Instead of the Blackman Beasley Court, the property that the city recently purchased to the south of here was formerly owned by the Hartman family before Middle Tennessee Electric purchased it in 2014, and so we would ask that you schedule a public hearing for February seventh to reconsider that name, the renaming of this segment from Blackman Beasley Court and instead rename it to Hartman Farm Court. 911 has reviewed this street name and has given its blessing to the street name as there being no duplications of or similar sounding street names in, in the county as a whole. So be happy to answer any questions. We would recommend that you schedule a public hearing for this renaming for February the seventh.
Make a motion that we approve a public, or make a motion for a public hearing on February seventh?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
All right, we have a public hearing scheduled. All right, last item is staff reports and other business.
Uh, Mr. Halliburton, I have nothing.
Okay. All right, we are adjourned.